It is June 1st, 2022. And the present in the room is Dorothy Maggio at home, Peter Barris, our Gordon Clerk, Melissa Brown, our Assistant Treasurer, Fact TV. We also have in the Select Board Room Josh from Fact TV and Stan Noga, Select Board Member, Bruce Mello, and also Road Supervisor, it looks like Mark Bills. Hello, everyone. So the meeting is called?
Can you turn down your volume just a tad?
Turn it down?
Yeah, I can turn down the TV if you want.
Whatever, it's easy.
Yeah.
All right. Test, 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 test.
It's the same.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute. Josh is turning down what I'm hearing. Turn that down.
Stop.
Okay, talk again.
Okay, welcome, everyone. I'm glad it's not a thunder and lightning storm. We all okay with the sound?
We're getting there.
We're getting there, I hope.
Let's give it a go.
Try again. That's better.
Good to go.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll start. Okay, so we'll start with the agenda since we just called the meeting to order and listed the names of the people who are present. Any review changes to the agenda, if any? I would like to ask for two additions. I would like to add item 5C, and that's office chairs. And I would like to add item 6B, phone system discussion.
What's this under?
Phone, telephone system discussion. Is there anyone else who would like to add or change anything on the agenda? Hearing none.
I can, I've got a number of little things, but I can do them under the heading that you've already got in the agenda.
Okay.
When the medial commission, there was a meeting the other night, et cetera.
Okay, perfect. All right. I will go on quickly to review an approved minutes from the May 18th, 2022 meeting. I have one edit for page one from the May 18th meeting. It's under Select Board Member Reports regarding the date of the New Brook Fire Department Memorial for Cynthia Now. It should read New Brook Fire Department on Saturday, June 18th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. instead of Sunday.
Noted.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on page one? Anybody have any changes to the minutes from page two? Hearing none. All those make a motion to accept the minutes from Wednesday, May 18th with that one edit. May I have a second?
Second.
Who seconded it?
Bruce.
Bruce, thank you, Bruce. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as edited signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you. At this point, oh my gosh, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 4th, 2022. May I have a second? And we'll discuss. Seconded by Stan Noga. Any discussion? Any changes to page one? Any changes to page two? Any page, any changes to page three? Any changes to page four? I have a change on page four. Down at greenup day. Mr. Bills reported that Tommy Brooks, B-R-O-O-K-S, had put up a-
Oh, yes, I found that and corrected it.
Okay. In the last sentence also, there was discussion about eight rolls of bags that had been stolen.
Not distributed.
Right, they were distributed by the- All right, that's it. Any changes to page five? Any changes to page six? I have a change to page six. Under item C, Town Clerk Report, there was discussion but no report. Should be added.
Noted.
Thank you. Any questions, any items on page seven? On page seven, I would like to add, after executive meeting, the Select Board exited the executive meeting at approximately 9:55 p.m. No actions or votes were taken while in executive session. Dorothy Maggio motioned to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Stan Noga. The meeting was adjourned at 9:58 p.m. That's all the changes for the minutes from May 4th. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from May 4th as modified signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous acceptance of the minutes as edited. Thank you. All right. We shall now go into members of the public schedule. This evening is our Assistant Treasurer, Melissa Brown. Thank you, Melissa. She's been sitting here with me for a while, watching everybody trying to get the computers to work. Melissa, tell us a little bit about what you'd like to talk to the Select Board. I know we had a big payment to the school district for the tax, for the school budget. How did that all work out?
Well, that's going out Friday, so we are going to have to do a transfer from the Highway Fund to the General Fund to cover some of that. Judy did send me an amount for the total AP, so it looks like we're looking at around $60,000 to have to transfer over. And I did talk to the bank, and they can actually do the transfer.
Is that because we have some uncollected taxes, or?
Oh, we do have some uncollected taxes, yes.
Does the uncollected amount equal $60,000?
I think last time I looked, it was only around $40,000.
So there's a $20,000 shortage.
We do have a $20,000 budget stabilization reserve account in the General Fund that if that's needed to be used at this time, that would be an appropriate use of that at this, I'm assuming, I'm not the treasurer, but there is that available.
And that's in the General Fund?
I'm not exactly sure how it was placed, but, oh, wait a minute, that does not occur until July 1st.
Next fiscal year.
Why are we short? Why would we be, why would we be short if the tax-
I would have to look into that. I wanted to touch base with Samara and things too, to see how things were calculated last year and how some of those rates were coming up. I don't know if she was the one that was doing it, but I think she probably knows the routine of it in and out, so she can help me out. I have been in contact with her. She's been really great. She's going to stop by again and go through all of that for the upcoming year as well.
I feel like there may be some extra expenditures on the crushed stone that we put out during February THA on our town roads, as well as our springtime mud roads. We don't normally spend that much money that early in the, in the spring or winter, so that could be some of the-
But, but Mark, the shortfall is not in the Highway Fund. The shortfall is in the General Fund. We're going to borrow-
Then it'll end up working out. The General Fund is actually owed around $27,000 right now from the highway, so I think by the time that pays the General Fund back, and then if we collect the remaining taxes, it should level out pretty even.
Oh, good.
So it should carry until June. It's just going to be tight until the rest of those taxes get in. And I have deposited the rest, or, you know, input all the rest of the taxes that have been received, so if you guys are good with it, I'll go ahead and apply the penalty. I don't know if there's like any standard that you guys usually have for when, or a grace period, or anything like that.
Hmm.
I know, I looked in the past, it's been a little bit all over the board for when it was applied.
You mean delinquent tax penalties?
Yeah, the 8%.
We decided this year at a recent meeting not to assess the 8% delinquent-
That's the wrong 8%.
Oh, God, okay, what could you tell us?
Okay.
Okay, tell us what we need to know.
All right, the 8% that, that you're talking about, Dot, is for homestead declaration. The tax 8% that Melissa's talking about is that after the fourth payment, we normally penalize people who have not made the fourth payment or owe anything by the fourth payment, 8%. And Samara used to do it three or four, five days after the last payment was due. So technically, you should probably tack on that 8% penalty after Melissa's, did you do all the checks today, Melissa? Did you deposit all the checks?
Yep, checks are done.
So at this point, you should, in my opinion, you should attack, attach the 8% penalty for the delinquent taxes. And then you should also send a delinquent tax report to yourself showing who's, what your totals are.
Yep, and then Judy and I are going to mail out the statements on Friday.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
As Guy's presentation completely correct.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm sorry, Melissa, I'll give our priority. I was just confirming that as Guy's presentation is, I believe, completely accurate, and that's, in my opinion, as a Select Board Member, what we should do.
Okay, yep.
I don't know if you need to take a vote on that, Dot, or not.
No, I don't think you have to. That's part of our policy.
I don't think we need to vote on it.
No, you don't have to vote on it.
Excuse me, I missed what was happening Friday from Melissa.
Judy and I are going to mail out all the late notices and follow up with phone calls to start getting that remainder of taxes back in.
Thanks.
All right. Melissa, how is everything else going? Do you have any other questions or concerns that you wanted to go over with us?
No, I think everything seems to be going good. I'm waiting on that schwab to release those funds for that $10,000 for the Meeting House donation.
Okay.
Because the town didn't have any bylaws, they have to go through a special approval.
Oh, what kind of bylaws were they looking for?
Town bylaws. So I sent them the required paperwork for the release of the funds, and then I sent them the town plan and different things, and they just have to process it differently, but they said they can work with that.
Fabulous. Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, well, Melissa, if you have any other concerns or issues with the transfer, keep us up to date on that. That's always a little concerning that we're, you know, short and borrowing from here to there, but with the delinquent taxes being collected, that that should, should, should be a wash.
Yeah, I talked to Samara about it, and it is kind of, nothing unusual, I guess, when it gets down to this point and things, so she did say it was normal.
Okay. All right. Or anything else before we move on, then?
No, I just wanted to touch base and see if there's anything different you guys needed or wanted, or need done.
Well, you had, you had mentioned that possibly changing some of the ways in which the warrants are done in, starting July, the new fiscal year, or it's automatically generating warrant numbers, that's not a problem. Is there anything else that you would like to see changed in the new fiscal year?
Um, not right off at the moment. I mean, I think I'll just kind of think about it for the end of the month and see if there's any changes that I need to get done.
All right, perfect.
Judy and I are just kind of running out our details on our end to see who does what and who takes care of things so things run smoothly.
Okay. All right. Select Board, any other questions for Melissa before we move on?
No.
All right, well, thank you, Melissa. You're welcome to stay, hang out with us if you'd like, but I understand if you- All right. I'm going to move on now to old business. I have under old business ARPA, A-R-P-A, and while we haven't had any meetings about ARPA, we did receive, and I did share with you, an email from Daniel Schwerner, a resident who we'll discuss later on under Communications. He did send us an email, and he has been participating in the Brattleboro Economic Summit, and he is familiar with federal guidelines and spending, and would like to participate in helping Brookline in, in understanding the procedures for it. And while we'll talk a little bit more about it later on, he is one of two residents that have indicated an interest in working with the Select Board that I'd like to sort of, now that I'm feeling a little bit better, I'd like to sort of nail a couple of things down later on with, with that. But did you all receive, I mean, did you all receive and read over what Daniel had written about his experience with the ARPA? Stan?
Yes, I did. I responded. Apparently, he, he contacted me, well, he's mailed you, and you forwarded his email to me. So I thanked him for his interest and his summary, and that stated that if he ever wanted to sit down and talk, I would be happy to do so. He actually pinned me down to doing that tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. here at the office. He wants to discuss things, so he says he's interested, but he didn't say what position specifically. I'm assuming it's a Select Board person, a position. So I'm printing out the VLCT job description for a Select Board and any other helpful materials that he can take with him if he'd like, and if anyone else is available, just take with him. He seems like he really wants to talk about this. I would normally have waited, but he wanted to do it Friday, and I said, yesterday, and I couldn't do it because I had something else scheduled. So he suggested Thursday, and I said, yeah, okay, and knowing that I'd be talking with you both, 3:00 tomorrow afternoon here at the town office. No, he's got a phone call. He's got a phone call.
Oh?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm sorry. It's a phone call, not a beer.
Okay.
I was picking you back up, but I changed that. He wanted to do a phone call, so. So I'll let you know what, what happens after that. I'll email stuff before the, probably tomorrow morning, so he'll have it. He wants to talk about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Stan. Appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to the next item under old business, and that is FEMA. I'm glad Guy is here tonight. I know that the FEMA site inspection occurred today. It seemed to be a pretty long day, Guy. What happened during it?
Well, today, we, and Mark could add to this also, Mark was there also. Basically, we just did Putney Mountain Road. It's a long, drawn-out process, a lot of measurements. We also had a mitigation person from FEMA who added to the dialogue, and it looks like we may also get some mitigation money for culverts on Putney Mountain Road. But that's, you know, that still has to be approved, but it's a, it's a slow process, but we started with Putney Mountain Road because that was the road with the most damage, and that was going to take the longest to have done. We're finished with Putney Mountain Road. We still have Holland Hill to do and the rest of Brookline, but hopefully, we'll finish tomorrow, and if we don't, he said he would be available also Friday. One person would be available Friday. He assured me that the inspections will be completed by this week.
Fabulous.
And I located all the documentation that I think he was looking for, so I think we're in good shape at this point. Mark, you can add whatever you'd like to add in regards to the inspection team.
Yeah, I think Guy pretty much covered it all. We met with three really nice people, four, and then two more showed up, so there was five total. Some came from town of Wardsborough when they got done up there, and they all had a different area of expertise, but the one guy talked a lot about things that FEMA covered and what they didn't cover, and how the mitigation part of his deal would take over. And so it sounds like the big culverts on Putney Mountain that we discussed and ordered can be paid for in a mitigation, and we may not have to use a grant, which a grant we would have to pay back a percentage. So then, as we moved up the mountain, culvert per culvert, some of the culverts that are failed or old and undersized, he'll help us bring them up to code, up to state standards through mitigation. So they don't want to not spend enough on the repairs that'll wash the road out the next storm, so it sounds like the two together are going to save us, we're going to get money back and save us the money in the long run.
All right, here's, here's the big question. Did they say when we might get some reimbursement?
I asked that question, and it's really, it's kind of, it's going to be in Mel's ballpark, because Mel's going to have to present it to us tomorrow. Will sign off on it, that we had the site inspection, then Mel will hook the numbers to it, and so on and so forth. And I expressed our desire to have some reimbursements by the end of June, and he said they were not in their position to say anything about that, so we'll have to speak to Mel. But again, what my thinking was, and I'll just, this is what I was thinking, that with the ARPA money, if we should fall short for any reason, that we don't get the money at the end of our fiscal year, we could bankroll ourselves using some of the ARPA money and then return it back to ARPA. That's just the one way to do it. You know, I'm just trying to keep the town from having to borrow money.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense. All right, well, very good. Thank you for all that time. I know it was a long day for y'all with that FEMA project. Okay, anything else under, oh, yeah, mine, my item, what was it, 5C? Oh, the chairs. I wondered if, we talked about, Bruce, I think you had emailed the ladies about the chairs for the replacement chairs and the-
Yeah, they said they were going to do, I talked to Drutler last meeting, if I didn't hear, and they said they were going to go, when I got a minute, Judy did, so we're going to go down to Staples and see what they, see what they're interested in. That's the last item further.
Okay. All right, I just, I just had a note, and I just thought I would add it under old business. All right, not, not, not a crisis or major concern. All right, now then I will move on unless there's another question. I'm going to move on to old business. I have in front of me a bill. A couple of days ago, Mr. Michael Wyner from the, our fire warden from the New Brook Fire Department came over the house with, yes?
This is new business, you said old.
New business, okay, there's nothing else under old business, I'm going to move to new business.
All right, were you going to do with phone system discussion?
Under 6B.
Okay.
Right now, I'm doing 6A. Okay, we're at 6A, new business. I received a bill from the, was delivered by Michael Wyner, a bill received from the Putney Fire Department for the costs that were associated in responding to a forest fire on Purple Mountain Road on May 1st, 2022. The amount of the bill is for $5,770. The burned area belonged to John Rowley at 74 Purple Mountain Road. The fire was started by Jamie McCallough, the neighbor, and he was burning mattresses and other substances that should not have been burned, and the fire got away and destroyed some of the property located at 74 Purple Mountain Road. I spoke to the Chief Thomas Goddard of the Putney Fire Department about receiving the bill. Putney was not the only fire department to respond to the forest fire. There were several forest, several departments that responded, but only Putney is billing for the use of engine number one, tanker number one, rush truck number one, squad number one, car number one, and ATV, 14 EMS, 14 personels, and a loss of a forestry hose that were burned during the operation, again, for a total of $5,770. I asked Mr. Goddard, because I don't ever remember the town being billed for this, and he said that the town is responsible and that we could then do, go after the, the responsible party, Jamie McCallough. I don't know what to say. I mean, that's another close to $6,000 that we have not accounted for yet in any of our budgeting processes. So I just wanted to hear what the Select Board thinks we should do or how we should handle this.
Exactly.
Well, the, the, the town of Brookline is billed by the Fire Department, and we need to, I don't, I don't know if it's, what do you call it when you put a lien, maybe put a lien on the property for that amount for the, for the, for the responsible party? We're responsible for the bill.
Whoa.
Yeah, I know.
This doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't make sense at all.
Not at all.
I suggest we talk to an attorney. It's, it's, it's a private property, apparently, that burned. It's in our town, but I mean, I cannot see why we as a town would be liable for individuals fired on their property. I would suggest we spend the $50 or $100 to ask an attorney and look at options to exercise in this case.
Has Jamie McCallough been notified?
I spoke to the chief this week, and, well, I guess it was the end of last week, and I figured I'd put it in this agenda to discuss it with you. I also thought we need to contact an attorney, but I didn't want to, I wanted to share, I wanted to have a discussion about it.
Okay, just a moment. Yeah, I have a stupid question. Has Jamie McCallough, you said chief, you meant chief of Putney, correct?
Yes.
I spoke with the Chief Thomas Goddard of the Putney Fire Department about this bill, saying, why are we being a collection agent? He says, you're not being a collection agent. This is a bill for Brookline. You can then go after the property owner.
Wait a minute. Wait just a second. Has Jamie McCallough been notified of this bill? Do you know?
I do not know. I do not think so.
Okay. I think maybe we might start there.
Does any of the other towns hold us accountable too?
No, New Brook is not holding us accountable. Dumerson is not holding us accountable. Brattleboro covered us, and there was one other town that, there were four departments that responded- And there was one other town that, there were four departments that responded to the fire, including the Brook, but only Putney is billing.
I would, I would suggest a bill be sent to Jamie McCalliffe. And if that person doesn't react within a month, then we entertain the idea of an attorney. If we're going to be made, if we're going to be forced as being the negligent party, which we're not, I'd like to hear it from a lawyer. That's what I'm asking.
All right, so what I'm hearing from the select board then is to photocopy this paperwork I received from Putney, put a cover letter, and send it to the responsible party asking for the payment.
And ask for, and ask for response within the days.
Yeah, I mean, I would do it the other way around. But if, you know, the option for me would be spend the 50 bucks or a phone call, ask the attorney what our rights are. And then what he says, then follow up with either the property owner or Mr. McCalliffe. With a time limit as Bruce has suggested. The only reason I suggest it in the order that I thought it was is you're going to wait a week to 14 days for this guy to answer. And if he's stupid, I'm sorry, if he's non-responsible, unresponsible enough to burn that kind of material in the yard because of fire, I kind of wonder how responsible he's going to be on responding to a town's inquiry or demand that he pay a bill. That unit, 72, I believe, is a rental unit on Mr. Rowley's property. So it's on Rowley's property. And I'm just wondering if we're, if we're timed, if time is of the essence, I would suggest an attorney. If we've got a month or two weeks to spare, then I would suggest I would go along with what, I mean, I'll go along with whatever the group decides. But there, that is another, what Bruce has said is one option, what I said is another option. I don't know which one is better, but majority consensus would obviously rule.
Okay, which attorney should I consult with?
Is it Fisher that we have there?
Yes, I've used Robert, it's Bob Fisher.
One second.
With office in Wilmington and an office in Brattleboro.
Be quiet, Frida.
And the reason we used him in the past was that he, he does other towns' work as well. And rather than probably taking a significant amount of time to study the issue, may have already had exposure to it and be able to answer you right off the cuff.
Which is a good point, because I don't think it'd be that expensive. It's just a point.
That's right, 100, 150 back to back. And often, most of them, the first visit they don't charge for.
Okay, so maybe Stan's got the right method there.
Okay, all right, well, I will, I'll try to find his phone number. What's his first name, Robert Fisher?
I believe it's Robert Fisher. He's the only active Fisher that's an attorney and went into town.
Fisher and Fisher.
That's right.
Ken Fisher was his son.
Okay.
Or was his dad.
All right. I will reach out by phone call for the attorney to review this concern and CC any documents that I need to mail to the residents regarding this $5,770 issue. All right, well, that was my concern on this item. All right. The next item that I asked to add to the agenda on is phone system. I was wondering about researching a phone system that might provide some help for the town clerk when he needs to answering phones for a lister question that we can then, like new fame, say, well, I'm going to put you in touch with the lister's voicemail. Push item, you know, button number two is listers. Button number three is the treasurer's department. Number four is the select board chair. So I think, I was wondering about, does anybody have any, I guess we use Comcast, right? Guy, we use Comcast for our phone system.
Comcast, we use Comcast for our phone. But the person that we need to speak to is Mr. Grimes. He's done all the towns with using phones and setting them up where they have, you know, press one for the town clerk, press two for the listers and so forth. If you want, I could give him a call and ask him what, what all is involved and see. I think it's a great idea because we have one phone and we field all the phone calls and all the answers. So he would be the guy to speak to. If you want, I would give him a call and he could give us a presentation and an estimate and go from there.
All right, that, that's a very good idea. Thank you, Guy. If you would handle that, that would, that would be great. Because, you know, when I spoke to you yesterday about the, some of the other questions that you answer that are beyond the town clerk, I figured, well, maybe we need to have a line where if, we're only open two days a week. And if someone calls.
It's normally overdue.
Yeah, it's, we need to upgrade. Yes, we, we need to upgrade. All right, thank you, that would be ideal. All right, anything else under new business before I move to reports and updates? Okay, treasurer's update, Melissa Brown, we moved her earlier to the scheduled members of the public. Okay, so we're going to move on then to item B, town clerk. I asked, Guy and I spoke yesterday on the phone. And I asked Guy if he was not going to be able to attend the meetings, if he would give us a short write-up of, for town clerk update. And Guy, I guess you basically said that it's not a requirement to submit a report, so...
It's, it's not a requirement and I, I think it's just redundancy. You know, I think everyone knows what the town clerk does. So I, I just find it, you know, not necessary. Unless there was something, if I wanted to admit, if I wanted to say, hey, I need some help for Election Day, or I need some help, I would certainly come to the meeting and, and say that. But I just, I just don't think it's necessary.
Okay, I mean, I was thinking like, you know, there were so many transfers or whatever, but...
No, that's, that's not what a select board meeting's for. It's basically, you know, if there's any questions, they could ask the town clerk. But it's just, it's just not necessary, in my opinion. And it's certainly not a regulation that you have to do. There's no statute saying that you have to report what goes on in the town clerk's office.
Okay, I'm just, all right, then we can then move on to item C, road supervisor. Mark Bills. I'm going to put you on mute, I'm going to mute myself just to get the dog out of here.
Frida behaves well. She's a real successful chairman.
Okay, so I guess since the last time I spoke at a meeting, we had received a grant for the leaf blower. And everything went through and was okay for pickup. So I made a trip to H.P. Fairfield's and brought home this brand-new buffalo leaf blower in a crate. The date was Friday.
The 20th? May 20th was the Friday.
20th, yes, Friday. So it came in a crate and when I got home, unloaded it. And it came with an assembly direction. It spent the afternoon assembling the leaf blower, which wasn't too difficult. And it's all set to go, just haven't hooked the battery up and so forth.
So I just wanted to give you that kind of heads up. I didn't want to say that on camera, but make sure that...
Also, since our last meeting, I did some brush cutting and re-lack under guard rails and around intersection bridges. Opened up a little better.
I'm not able to hear.
They have to be able to move it right.
I'm sorry, there's interference.
It's Guy talking.
Okay, so I was able to locate some poison ivy, which was able to get a rash from it. And I was in hopes that now that I've had it hundreds of times, maybe I'm getting a lured, but not yet. So anyway, I talked with Gary in the morning. Gary had treated some poison ivy along the driveway edge out here with vinegar, salt, and dish soap. And very safe to use, it's sprayed on in a pump sprayer. So I'm going to apply a couple gallons of that to some areas, which I, I'm going to be doing some brush cutting in hopes that it'll not set down. Also, when we left the season last fall, we had done repairs for FEMA and hoping to get reimbursed. We kind of stopped, held back a little bit due to lack of funding. And once we found out that we were indeed going to be reimbursed that it needed to get repaired, I had reapplied more gravel in the past couple of weeks, a couple of days upon Putney Mountain. To, the road had settled from the repairs, so it had a belly in the middle of the road. We corrected it with a crown of finished gravel to allow the water to better drainage. So we're, we're getting very much closer to completing the repairs to the flood damage on Putney Mountain. The final few stages will be one or two culverts, but also stone line ditches, which the stone line ditches, as we know, are, by 2025, state has made us aware that we are to have all of our major ditches stone lined. So that's in the process. I've also been monitoring the recycle bins, saying they're going fairly well with that. I noticed today somebody left materials that didn't belong. I talked with Dan Cowler, who was in touch with Wyndham Solid Waste. And he's talked about getting some signage from them to state what is recyclable and what is not recyclable. And asked if I could put that sign in a bucket of cement or a post in the ground. So I told him that when he received the sign that I would be glad to work with him on that. Also, I think I'm on my third stop sign down at the intersection of Hill Road, Grassy Brook by the now resident. And I'm not sure if they run over it or if they steal them for scrap metal. But anyway, there, as you're leaving Hill Road onto Grassy Brook, the left-hand turn onto Grassy Brook, the signpost was pulled from the ground where I made a little more of an effort so that it couldn't be stolen. But it looks like it was pulled out of the ground with a heavy vehicle and stolen. So I, I replaced it with a, a used stop sign for the time being. I also replaced a stop sign at Ellen Ware Road again. And again, I made a little bit of an effort, hooked it to a tree instead of a pole. And the same thing on Mountain Road, we got a new Mountain Road sign for Putney Athens Road. Used the ladder to get it up high enough where it can't be reached easily. And put a little effort into, maybe it can't be removed without some effort. And I've also, you know, after some of these heavy rains and winds, I ride around, check roads, moving wood debris. So I spent some time on Ellen Ware Road, replenishing some gravel out at the far end where it was lacking. And I think things are going pretty good throughout the rest of our roads this time. I still have, I'm doing some road patching on the hot days when I feel like it will, the cold patch will work well sticking to the hot pavement. I don't know if I said at my last meeting, I was using a material that I put down, it's driveway sealer, but it, it's very sticky and it dries to a firm hard. And so I put that in before the new patch material and it seems to be working super. I think it's going to work in shallow areas where normally sometimes the pavement doesn't adhere. I think this is giving it a little extra grip, a little more rooted. So, and then working with FEMA, we plan to spend the next day, possibly two, to finish up measuring and showing the repaired sections of damage. So that makes everything.
Mark, may I make a suggestion when you meet with FEMA? And that is, we have in recent minutes, the approval of the, let me see, the approval of the bids for pavement, for the repairing the pavement on Putney Mountain Road that got washed out and the, by the bridge, by Amadon's corner there. So if they need to see the bid or want to know what the actual cost that the select board has agreed on for those repairs, it's in the minutes. It's either, let me see. I'll send you an email.
I could send you the RFPs that you created, that I have a copy of on my computer. That would help.
Okay, yeah, Wednesday, May 4th, on page four, has all of the bids opened, reviewed, and how we voted on them. So, but yeah, okay, that would be good, Stan, the RFPs. And the ones we've actually accepted, the two bids we, the bid that we accepted for Putney Mountain and the bridge. They don't need the one that's down by Cynthia Nowes.
I mentioned that today to them.
Oh, good, thanks, Guy, yeah, good.
I know that we, we have the estimated repairs for pavement from Bayesian Brothers before we put the bids out. Was it, did the bids come back for more than the estimate or less than?
Remember, you and, you and Archie took a look at them. And, and I don't remember offhand if they were, how close they were to the original estimate. I think we actually ended up voting on Friday, May 6th, and accepted the bids during a special meeting on Friday, May 6th. The May 4th minutes has all of the bid information. But the May 6th special meeting minutes has the actual bids that were accepted, so...
Okay, very good.
All right, all right, anything else, Mark?
No, that, that was it.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, was it you that cut down the, I think that made it than what you were talking about when Frida was barking at me. As soon as you were approaching the bridge, the green iron bridge down by the swimming hole, did you clean all that out?
I did, yes.
Fabulous.
I started on the Brookline side. It looked good to me, so I went across the bridge, knowing that as you're coming into town, sometimes it's tough to look across to see who's coming. So I took the liberty of doing both ends of the bridge.
No, that, that, that really made a nice difference. I appreciate that personally, because I know all the kids that go down there and myself, maybe.
I was going to apply some of the, the re-treatment stuff that I got from Gary. So we'll see how that works.
Fabulous, I know there's a lot of not lead that started to grow up in there. So that would be a welcome, welcome change. All right, is there anything else? If not, we can move on to a select board chair report. Well, basically, my select board... All right. Well, basically, my select board chair report is, I apologize for any late follow-up um that I've had. For example, I started to but did not get to Julie Lavorgna, a letter requesting um a, a uh gardeners to help plan a memorial garden by the round schoolhouse. I have started it. I just, I'm just starting to feel normal again. Um, I have transitioned from a walker to a cane and from a cane, I'm walking around without a cane right now. So I feel much, much better. My new knee is kicking around. And um so I think I will probably be able to catch up on things. Other than that, I just apologize. Uh, I haven't really been that present um for, for some of the things, but I'm doing well enough now. And if anybody has any concerns, please don't hesitate to, you know, call me here at home or, or send me an email. I'll try to be better responding quicker. Um, I know there's a couple of things that I saw that came across about um like an email from the Vermont visiting nurses. I have to respond to them about when the new appropriations letters are, will be accepted. And so I do have a, a, looking at a small backlog of things to catch up on, but I will, nothing that's really earth shattering. But if you do find something that I should have done and I didn't, please don't hesitate to, to bring it to my attention.
Just one thing about the appropriations, Dot.
Yes, sir.
That information is on the website. I updated it back in February or March. So you could steer them to that uh website if you want.
Okay. Very good. All right. Um, going on then, we go to the Bruce Mello, building commissioner. Um, go ahead, Bruce.
Okay. Uh, first up, uh Mark and I had a little discussion before the meeting. There was a, uh, an extension discussion from last fall of work that we wanted to complete on some of the buildings. And that's what I asked Mark to do. Uh, I'm gonna have him go over to Suzie's and straighten out an issue about their air conditioners, do a little bit of servicing, and then finish this town office, which is just the painting of the roof, the painting of the bulkhead, and one ceiling edge over here on the southeast corner of the building. Uh, I haven't checked lately, but you, this building's had less mice than my, my house in the last, since September. I think we've had one then, since September. So everything has worked out that way. So hopefully by, by um June 24th, when Mark gets it, uh the grass cutter, we'll get that done. Then we're looking at the fall for working on the round host house school, round school house stuff that we had for the list, on the list. Can anybody hear me clearly? Cause I got the snare sound. Peter, you good with me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. So next, um speaking about the round schoolhouse, we haven't broken with it. I don't know what to do about that. We're gonna have to get somebody to replace it. If anybody's got any suggestions on who could do it, that would be helpful, but I don't have anybody that can pick them up. It's not my end.
I would think Kerry Born.
Yeah, I was thinking. Would he do it?
Oh, yes. Pretty sure.
You see him?
I bump into him every few days.
Great. Ask him, tell him the mask and if you would do it. That'd be great. Now, as far as, just a moment, as far as you had brought up the memorial garden, Dot, um and we also, the idea of the uh take one, put one back book return thing at the Grassy Brook uh Hill Road intersection. Why don't we get into that? Right? I just wanna get into the, to the garden portion. If you saw the list that we had for the round schoolhouse last year of the work that we, that we were gonna do. And the very last thing on that list was do something with the furniture for, for flowers of education, prayer, and whatever. Now, and saying that, I think, it didn't take me long to figure this out. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think a Cynthia Now Memorial Garden would be a nice testament to that woman for what she did for this town. And I think I could discussion with Laura Metucci. Do I have her name right, Dot? So Laura Metucci, that, enter her in discussion. Maybe we can invite her to a select board meeting to get her ideas. But what I can do personally is I probably have the best badass tiller in the county, so as far as turning over any soil, that shouldn't be any issue at all. Um, so maybe by the fall, we can set up some kind of perennial garden per, in conjunction with Lori. Uh, what maybe things that, that, that Cynthia likes and do her justice and maybe put a plaque or a stone there someplace. That's a screw, little bench for their platform. Um, but all ideas, that's, that's to be, to be seen down the road. We can do that later. Okay.
I spoke with Lori and she, I told her, um, uh, she said that, that there are some, not giant, but a, you know, uh, a, a stone from the homestead that she would like to donate to the town and we can get a small plaque to attach to the stone, which would identify Cynthia Now uh as her memorial garden on that. So that's great. I wanna, I do, I will finish the listserv letter, get it out and get some volunteers to help look, maybe do a little design, a comp, you know, not competition, but design thing. And I know Lori has a selection of plants uh that she, that Cynthia has been growing and that she would like to see included in it. So I think that'll be lovely. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. And your rotor tiller would be very helpful.
Well, I'll take care of that. And that's a good question. You can say, speak light. But anyway, I wanna move on to a uh to, I love this word, final report to you all on the work that was done at the school. Okay. So between 11/8/21 and April 1st, there were 21 visits by Coda and Coda. Eight of those visits were covered expense. One visit was a discussion at the end, which was in charge. One visit was a bad thermostat that was in charge. And it was one charge for, I think it was a hundred and five dollars for dishwasher hose that had to be fixed. And I gave authorization to have iron fix it for them because they had an issue there. So basically, we had 21 visits total and a little and then I'll tell you what, what I know that was done and I asked iron, I think he missed one, but I'll tell you what he told me back weeks ago. Uh, I insisted on him telling me what, what was replaced. And in the old building, the zone valve in the sitting room, a zone valve in the office in the hallway, both zone valves which were in the wrong way. And the southeast classroom is own valve and the gym, two zone valves near the southeast door. And I think he missed a zone valve that was in a classroom that faces the street. I think you missed that. We're not asking that. Just to keep this accurate. And all thermostats. And he also gave me a refund on the wifi thermostats based on the quote that he gave me and Coda Coda overcharged me a hundred and seventy-five dollars or something like that. Got that money back. Okay, now, saying that, the grand total of money that I had that we spent on that building from and the last two visits were free, I should state that. Last two visits were free by hundred. I know he did it, but I was never billed and it was just to fix the wiring and the air, air exchangers that we kind of talked about previous splitworm meeting. But saying all of that, the grand total of the amount of money that we spent was $10,644.56. And I think my math, math mathification is correct because I've been over, 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 and blew the face. And um, that's just about it. Uh, wait, which is that? There's something else I wanna see. Hold on. They replaced all those zone valves, all those zone valves, replaced all the thermostats. And I have every invoice here and you all are welcome to look at it. I, if you, if you choose to, it's all organized in order and totaled. And the only thing that's left at this point that iron and I spoke about is the time clock that governs the air-to-air exchangers in Inright. It's wiggling in the breeze. So he's gonna get one, he's gonna get back to me soon. I told him, yes, do it. Let's get it done. And for all intensive purposes at this point, we're baseline. It's over. And that was what, four months? What a mess. But anyway, that's done. Now, saying that, I've been waiting for a number of people to call me back on ideas that we've talked about in the past with respect to heat pumps, panels, electric, those basic three things. And I'm having a, a degree of difficulty of getting quick responses out of people without being pushy. And people are taking weeks to get back. So I'm trying to uh get people to cut to the chase as I speak to them. So can we? Can, you know, can you give me a timeline here? If you can't get back to me, could you tell me you can get back to me? Or when you can get back to me? Because circle jerk games, I, I don't go for, but they're very easy. Now, saying that, I would base, I talked to um that solar company, that, uh, whatever. I talked to Matt from them uh this, this morning. And he's gonna get back to me next week, the final numbers for both. The second quote on the panels other than the first quote of six weeks ago or seven weeks ago that we got from up north. And he's also gonna get some quotes on heat pumps. That would make four quotes. I'm starting to determine and decipher which is what I want. Not so much the panels, what's, what's this line? With the heat pumps, that's what that building needs. That's what I'm zeroing in on. So what I'm gonna recommend, because they are, that particular company's PIP in August, that we consider next time doing an RFP for the air-to-air heat pumps. At that point in time, but then when that's open, it could be determined, deciphered. Uh, that we agree upon what is needed in each, each room. We have a lot of flexibility with this. So I think moving forward in that direction is a good idea. Now, as far as the panels go, the panels are different. Once I get a quote from, from these folks um in the next week, I'm probably gonna call one more, sunny side solar, just to get, I, I, I need to breathe a little here. I need to see different ideas. And one, one thing I already picked up about our first call from up north is that he wanted to put panels on the eastern part of the building. And the guy that came from Stradivale who looked at, said, well, it's not such a good idea to put panels on the east side. But he also gave me the same total amount of panels as the first guy. Okay. So I guess what I'm saying in a nutshell is I'm finding the start for the right way with that. And the only way I can do that is by getting these quotes and tying it down and coming to a determination of what the best approach is. Also, there's a lot of little issues with the panels that no one would think of. Warranty, how long, is it replacement, maintenance? So getting really into the weeds about all that. And I've already, for the first, first two companies, I've got an understanding about both, both where they're at that I can report to you all and explain to you what our choices are. Um Dot, I might ask you to call, I know you're not busy. If I don't get a call from the electrician I've been working with very shortly, to call Larson Electric? Are you in touch with them? You are.
Yeah, I, I can, I can call, uh, yep, I can call him.
Because if I, uh, this is easy stuff I've asked this guy to do. And he's just putting me way out there. It's three weeks, not three years. So I would really like to move forward with the simple stuff. One thing I was gonna ask, the other electrician do something on my house. That has nothing to do with us here. But the other thing was changing the electric wiring, which isn't a major complicated thing, and the lighting of Suzie's to cut down the use of uh fluorescent lights to LED. And I've already done, I've already been down to Grant State Electric to look at the cost, the LED bulbs. So if this doesn't work, I even wanna talk to that, Dr. Dot, the other electrician. So if he doesn't call me back soon. Now, I called him twice, saw him three Saturdays ago with Patty in WW's. Good guy, like him, nice person, but uh not happening. So I kind of, if I can, move on and re, and resolve that. So that's basically it. Uh, one more thing. One more thing, and I, I wouldn't probably surprise if Stan has about this and about this time, but we've talked about also the consideration of replacing boilers. I'm of the opinion at this point in time, oh, I've never gotten no answer from Coda and Coda. He said he'd be back within two weeks, or he'd forget about all the details. And that had to be over a month ago. Whatever. I, I can't beat their heads to the wall and say, please do it now. What am I gonna do? So the one thing I'm trying to clear up is there's infrastructure money out there. And I saw that in that weekly from Dot. Now, I read that, I read the dot back in March. $3.2 million and I've gained no information from the efficiency from, no from anybody. So I'm thinking about calling Bernie's office or whatever, whatever representative, see if he gives me some answers. What's this for the infrastructure money? What are we entitled to? And we would, this, this $3.2 million out of $2 billion was supposed to be earmarked by the governor to replace boilers in municipalities and weatherization. We want some. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tie that down. But in saying that, Stan, I think at this point in time, I think it's really prudent. And so we have to consider, well, for the money aspect, rather than dip in hugely into the I'm not in favor of replacing the boilers and replacing air-to-air heat pumps and zipping in a lot of the, the money. Not in favor of that at all. And I'm also not personally, I'm also not in favor of spending that huge money, our money on air-to-air heat pumps to determine the cost. So saying that, I think for the foreseeable future, we agree that is the appropriate thing to do financially. Every other reason works, by estimation. If it works financially and we shall choose to do the air-to-air heat pumps, we're a good shape. Because we've got the air-to-air heat pumps that go down to below 20 below now. Other than that, when I was on the Newbrook Energy Commission uh uh for the, for the Newbrook, for the Mitsubishi's back then and the 500 kilowatt system, they didn't go that far. I think they went down six below. It's different now. They go down pretty, pretty well, which is good. But also, the big deal is, and this gets Suzie's people real excited, is of course, they're air conditioning as well. So it benefits everybody, everywhere, all the way across the line. But it has to be affordable. I don't see the feasibility of doing both, like I said a minute ago. And as far as the replace, replacing the boilers, I think we should buy our time and take a look what we can do, see what we can do to get some help with the money. Whereas this is a energy efficient issue. I mean, those things are monsters. They chew up a lot of juice. And I don't see, without a little fighting here, that we shouldn't be able to get some money to help us replace those boilers. Uh, so that being said, that's, sure, it's an active heating system. Sure, we just spent $10,644.66 on fixing the HN, but now we have a perfectly fine operating system. And the less we use it, the better it's gonna be for the town and for, in terms of where, and for Suzie in terms of the, the amount of cost. So if we were to agree to do the area heat pumps, we got that, Savannah, her bills are gonna go boom. Especially if we put the panels in, they'll all come together very nicely. So unless anybody's got any questions, I think we're pretty much done. And then the weatherization part, which we have to with any about this is, is down the road. And that's in conjunction with efficiency of monitor. I've had three, three conversations with Chris Campbell about that. And we'll get some money for that too. But I think it's prudent and wise for me to keep my, my mind open to the best I possible can to get us money to help us with the racing as well and not take it out of our own money. That's why I'm with that. So I guess that's it. If anybody's got any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Bruce, that sounds, sounds very good. I do have a question. I appreciate the fact that you have worked with the uh, the Newbrook when they were doing the energy auditing and, and putting in their air-to-air exchangers and such. If, if you have a copy of their, my concern is when we write RFPs, we're not that great at it. So if there is a sample RFP, we don't wanna limit. We'd like the professional company to come in and assess what the actual needs are. Each, each of the several companies that we will hopefully get bids on. So how do we? Will, will you bring, bring a sample RFP at the next meeting and?
Yeah, let's straighten out the wording. You and I can work on that. We can straighten out the wording. I can, I don't have a hell of a life back from when. It was a little different with the energy committee. Cause we were dealing with like three different major outfits. And we're talking, um, I'm trying to remember now. If I remember right, I'm forgetting the name, but it went over with Chesterfield. Um, won't have to follow the names all of a sudden.
It was Arc Mechanical, right? Arc Mechanical?
Yes. They, they did, and I know the guy too. They did the air-to-air heat pumps. And I believe they were the only one that did all of it. I've been talking to Kim, Kim Friedman a little I've been talking to Kim Friedman a little bit, I'll see if she remembers. But I believe they were the only ones that bid on the air-to-air heat pumps. The 500 kilowatt system was almost a blood war. And we ended up, the community, the school district, ended up cleaning up on that deal, a $20,000 plus lease. But to get to the point, I think we can clean up a nice, a nice RFP, make it clearer defined as to what we're looking to do, and let them tell us what they're gonna do for how much.
Perfect, perfect. All right, well, thank you again for all that research. I know you spent a lot of time on it. And if anybody else, if there's no one else that has any questions for Bruce, we'll move on. All right, thank you very much. All right, Stan, I know you, highway and grant updates. I know you were trying to get some serial numbers and clarify some of the grant for the blower. What have you found out or what else can you share with the select board?
The bottom line is, I, this afternoon, submitted a request for reimbursement from Wyndham Regional Commission. I completed the forms as best I could. I estimated the hours that we would use that leaf blower in a year. But I used our mileage report to report the total mileage that we'd probably be servicing with it. I ended up spending an excessive amount of time on it because I didn't have the paperwork. I didn't look at myself to write numbers off of it or anything like that. I spoke with the salesperson, I spoke with the office in Hopkinton, New Hampshire. Actually, it's in Maine, the Maine office for businesses is in Maine, for Fairfield. And there was, the main glitch was when this town called their salesperson to get the serial number or model number for the leaf blower, that person was in the field and did not have access to the files. And he gave her a number that doesn't line up with anything on any of the forms we received, even the ones that were given to Mark when he came back, the day he picked it up. So, we spoke with the lady in Maine, and she, it turns out, they don't know an awful lot about what they sell. It's a hell of a thing to say. But on their books, it doesn't even show as being paid for yet. They have the check, they acknowledge they got it. It took her some research to pin that down. She, after an hour and so, found that. But in any event, everything appears to be copacetic. Mark, this evening, was fine enough to give me a packet which has all the serial numbers in it. And I'm going to take that down and put it in the online file that I have on my computer. I'm sure we'll keep this packet somewhere in the system, whether it be here or at the town garage, whatever the board decides. So, I did submit the package. I assumed that if there's anything further they need, I did make the offer to Jeff Nugent of Wyndham Regional, "Get back to me and let me know." But here it is. So, we've got $5,600 coming our way. I reported what our interest in dollar amount was. And so, I think, I think we're all set there. And I do, we now have the numbers that we need off the engine and off the unit itself. The only concern I have, or question I have, is has anyone filed the registration for warranty on it yet?
It's in here.
It's in? You haven't done it, so I won't repeat it if you've already done it.
No, I have not.
Do you wanna do it, or would you like me to do it? Okay, okay. Terrific. Terrific, wonderful. I will do that then. So, I will do that tomorrow. So, that's item number one on my list. Item number two is the, I started working on the RFPs to revise them to accept the concept or utilize the concept of email submission of bids or RFPs. And I downloaded the Adobe Pro DC, made all the changes in the form eventually. Was about to erase your signatures and the select board signatures from 2021. And when I saved it, it won't let me open it. So, I've gotta spend some time on the, I spent over two hours on it, it's ridiculous. In any event, I will hope to have that ironed out and completed by the close of tomorrow. And I will send it to the select board members for your review for the next meeting. That's item, so that's number two. Number three is the packages for the repaving bids. I've been feeling frankly kind of burnt out until Sunday, so I haven't finished them. I will try to do that by the end of the week. So, number four is, and I think Peter Verris can probably echo anything I forget. I think he and I were the only two white-haired individuals at the Wyndham Regional Commission earlier this week. We have an opportunity coming our way in the future. Perhaps this fall, maybe early next year, to take advantage of the electric resiliency zones that we had briefly touched on earlier in this fifth calendar year. If I got it, my memory's not failing me, and my notes are accurate. It's for seven towns, Brookline is one of them, Athens is another, Rattleboro, Rafton, Putney, and one other town. They're gonna be putting in these battery packs in residences in those towns. Rather than looking at it as a added item to be billed for, they're gonna handle it, as I understand it, with funding from other sources, FEMA and the federal government, as a upgrade. So, in theory, it shouldn't cost the citizen who participates and wants to use this battery system, it's not gonna cost them any additional money out of their pocket to do it. They're Generat batteries, much like the Tesla ones that some people have in their basements. My neighbor has one, it lasts him one to three days, depending upon what he has hooked up to it at the time, over that time. So, that's coming down the road for the town and for some reflection to decide whether, I don't know if they're gonna approach the town per se or the individuals in the town. That was a question I didn't ask and wasn't sure about. But I gather it's the individuals in the town of those seven towns to start with, use that as a pilot program, and then possibly extend it to the rest of the county in the years forthcoming. So, there's that issue. Number five, I attended the rescue meeting for the town a week ago or so when they decided or were told they were no longer going to be required by Rattleboro. And it looks like they've got a wonderful management administrative group. They've done other things out there in regards to this COVID-19. And as a result, have generated substantial monies, which have given them a financial cushion to operate on with having lost Rattleboro's portion of their annual income. Essentially, what they've done is in Windsor County, in Bennington County, the Department of Health hired Rescue to go in and provide the shots to the elderly and those people who could not make it to hospital or other locations. And they did it speedily, the state was amazingly pleased. And so, that is another source of income. There's another project they've got in the mainstream that they're going to announce after the first of July of this year for other means of generating income. So, the loss of Rattleboro in and of itself should not be a debilitating aspect to their coverage of our town and the towns around us. Drew Hazelton, the director or the CEO, indicated that the contract they have in place with everyone is going to be honored for the next three years as a sign. The increase next year will be zero percent. The increase the second year will be one percent. And then, the third year will be another one percent. So, the increases to be expected by the town over the next several, three years is minimal in terms of increases. One thing that maybe the citizens and ourselves have wanted to know is that apparently, after the first of July, the 911 protocol for this area will be, will change. All 911 calls will go through the Keane system that has been partially functioning in the 911 system currently. So, it's all gonna go over there. As, yeah, it is up July 1st. And so, that's a brief summary of Rescue. What's next here? Oh, I did go through the cemeteries, four of them. The two on the north end of town, the Austin Cemetery down here near Indian Acres, and then the Riverside Cemetery over where the Osgood farm is. And I could not find an Asia Fuller. So, I don't know what to say unless there's death records that go further back that might be in the town vault to, I don't know what to tell this individual who's inquired. There was not another so-called Fuller family gravestone anywhere in those four cemeteries.
So. Interesting. I'm just wondering if the family is mixed up with Brookline, Massachusetts, or Brookline, New Hampshire? If it was really Brookline, Vermont that the family, whatever this family member was a part of. But thank you very much for doing that. I know Samara said that this summer, when her family comes up, they're gonna walk through the North Cemetery and Parsons Cemetery, and will also continue to look. But I will write to the family and tell them what you've done and what others have done. Much appreciated, thank you, Stan.
Also, when I went over those, went through those, yeah, that's an idea, Peter. When I went through the cemeteries, I made note of which ones had veterans and which ones did not. Of the four that I looked at, there were three of them. The one on the west side of Athens Road, at the intersection of Whitney Hill and Grassy Brook Road. The Austin Cemetery and the Riverside Cemetery had veterans that were in those cemeteries. The one on the right side of the road, right across where Whitney Hill comes down into Grassy Brook Road, there were no indications of a veteran in that cemetery. So, for next year's planning purposes, if we, if it's our responsibility or the veterans in the area through a veterans organization, it puts those up, it may be helpful to be aware of that. And lastly, there are, I received a notice from Ross Gouin of E-Trans that there are AIDS grants and aid that are requiring to, required to be filed by June 24. When you look at the schedule, I believe the town of Brookline is entitled or given or allotted an amount of $11,000 to spend on road repair for AIDS and grant, which are culverts, drainage areas, turnouts, et cetera. And we need to have an application submitted to them by the 24th of June in order to be considered, of an application factually being filed to be then awarded the grant or approved. So, I think if the town is interested, I think Mark and Archie and myself need to sit down, I would say before the next meeting, select board meeting, to determine what it is that needs to be done with those grants. I have a copy of the letter here, but I believe I've sent it along to Mark and Archie. And just, we need to get together to decide what the town needs to do. I think the match is a 20-80 grant, if I'm not mistaken. Because we went and took the action that we did complying with the state road standards, it's increased. It was a 30%, match. Let's see. No, it would've been 80%, but because we filed that document, it's now only gonna be a 10% match. So, that was the benefit of actually having done that wonderfully. It was gonna be a 20-80, and it's now gonna be a 90-10 because we filed those documents. So, I think that's with that, that's everything that I am taking responsibility for.
Well, that's quite a bit of responsibility and much appreciated. If you could get in touch with Archie and schedule something that the three of you could look at before the next select board meeting, that would be great. And I also got notice, I may have mentioned it before, that our FEMA reimbursement for the Storm 4621 is now a 90%, 10%. So, that's also good. And then, whatever is left over, I think the state of Vermont will help cover. So, we may not have any expenditures for the storm. Time will tell. But thank you, Stan, that's wonderful, much appreciated.
Thank you, appreciate the support and the teamwork that we got going on here.
Yes. All right, are there any other reports or concerns that the select board members wish to share?
Got one thing. On the AP work, there's a couple of charges fixing equipment. Is it more carburetors again?
Yes, yes, bolts. So, this is the third item that, it sets for a long time and any gas that gets left. So, this was going bad at the time.
Yep. Let me explain from a pro, Ron Greenwood, Ron Husker, who's been in the business since 1965. Gas changes from ethanol solidifies every month. And saying that, ethanol right now is 10% of gas. Joe is getting ready to change it. That's gonna make small engine people go freaking nuts. So, what do we need to do? We don't want this last fall. They wouldn't pay five, five and a quarter gallons of fuel, but it's gonna be a lot cheaper in place of, and we'll leave you open to it. We really gotta do that. The other thing is, is you mentioned Kerry might be interested in doing that class.
I believe he changed the window at the meeting house. Then there was a window pane.
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay.
And he's experienced with painting and woodworking. And he had mentioned, you know, if anything was gonna get around schoolhouse, he would.
I got another job for him to take it.
Yeah, so.
You know, the rope pulls on the windows in Susie's, the old, because, oh, by the way, that's a, that building was built in 1947, I found out.
Oh, really?
It's just 100, well, 95 years old. So, for some reason, Dave and I missed that one window, which is the very one facing the door as you go back up into the entrance way. And you can see the sash, the cord hanging. If I could get Kerry to do that, that would take care of a really big deal or something that I have nobody to take care of. Because Dave's also retired. So, if you could ask him that, see if he would consider doing it.
Is it the ropes that brought it up?
Rope broken. So, what has to happen, because I saw Dave do it a number of times, you take off the molding, take off the inside, you redo it, make sure it works, put everything back together. I'm sure Kerry knows that. So, if he would consider doing it, that'd be wonderful. That's it for him. That's all I had for the extra stuff.
Okay, I had a concern that came up about payroll. And I spoke to Mr. Tanza about it, just wanted to share what he said. And that was one of the reasons why I brought up discussing the phone system. There were, in the past two pay periods, two hours per, or an hour a week added on by Mr. Tanza for, I'm gonna say, community service or where he helped community residents answer questions about tax bills and things of that sort, that phone calls came up. Could they mail a tax bill? Can they do this? And so, while he said the adding the hour per week for that, for doing that work was categorized under a treasury amount. And technically, I spoke with Guy about it, we can't categorize it as a treasurer cost at $20 an hour because technically he's not an assistant treasurer at this time. So, I did say, well, can we just put it under, you know, a regular town clerk hours? And Guy said that he is limited to, what was it, 21 and a half hours of?
21 hours a week.
There you go. 21 hours of pay period?
21 hours, yes, a pay period.
21 hours of pay period.
I'm sorry, excuse me. 21 hours a week and one.
and um one one day a month for Saturday.
Right. So um so if there is a a question about that, you know, we can't put it under a treasurer. So that was one of the reasons why I thought that if we had the phone system and Guy had to um pass the responsibility to answering some of those questions to someone else, that a a phone system with voicemail would be helpful. But in the meantime, I know residents do appreciate getting a quick response to a question. Um, what uh what uh, you know, we could either increase, well, we're at the end of the term, so I don't know if we needed to increase the number of hours available. And of course, ARPA money could help in that respect in the coming uh twenty twenty two, twenty three budget uh to cover those kinds of things. Or I I don't know if we wanted to bring it up at another select board meeting or or how you wanted to address this.
Can I just say something, Doc?
Certainly. Go ahead, Guy.
Uh, one of the, one of the reasons I I put that those hours there is because title searchers, extractors, uh, residents uh come in, they wanna pay taxes. They also want to know how much taxes they owe. They wanna know what their taxes were three years ago. So those basically are treasury um treasury issues. So I I just charged the one or two hours a week, one hour a week. And um, I didn't think that we could add that to my hours as a town clerk because of the budgetary restriction. So if you wanna add an hour to the town clerk's um budget, that's fine with me, and I just won't put it down as that additional uh time. Because I spend a great deal of time answering tax questions and people enjoy it. And it's, we're a small town, uh, you know, you can't expect the treasurer to be sitting there waiting for someone to come in to ask about a question. And title extractors, they need to know current tax situations and so on and so forth. So that's that's where I'm at at this point.
Yeah, and I completely, I do understand that and um I do understand that and I'm glad we were able to talk about it. That's why I thought, well, the phone system and then going forward, uh, reviewing the number of hours. So so basically, it's twenty one hours or forty two hours a month. Well, I I can't even get, yeah.
Um, twenty, instead of twenty one hours a week, it would be twenty two hours a week. And you know, the same, the Saturday's the same. So it's basically as, you know, adding that hour to the uh town clerk fees.
Okay. All right. So I would like to, if it's Stan, go ahead, Stan, go ahead. How would you like to address this?
Would you, are you looking for input on my thoughts on it?
Sure.
Uh, I would suggest that guys simply, uh, because it's a assistant treasurer function and the majority of them are not emergencies, is to just simply provide contact information for the treasurer and allow the treasurer to handle it so that he he doesn't get overlapped into another department that he technically is not a part of. And it's if it's a uh a closing, I mean, I did closings for banks for fifteen years. And it's rarely an an emergency. Usually a phone call can be made to the person that needs to be contacted if in effect is a real emergency. Otherwise, these are planned, you know, typically a week in advance, if not more. So uh, if people know that there is not gonna be a payment on the property taxes, the treasurer a week or ten days in advance can give them the outstanding amount, the per diem of interest due, et cetera, et cetera, and and it's over and done with. It's uh, I I think that Guy uh would be able to not have to participate in that. And I do believe from our phone system standpoint, irrespective of cross role or roles more than one role, that's just a a way to respect the the town clerk, the assistant town clerk's uh ability to ants be on the phone and have somebody else call in without having to tell the person they're on the phone with, I'm sorry, I gotta hang up and deal with something else or not answer the phone. So I would suggest step running it out, let the treasurer take care of the treasurer's stuff and or the assistant treasurer to take care of the treasurer's stuff.
So in essence, what, so in essence, what you're saying, Stan, when someone comes in and wants to pay their taxes, I say, I'm sorry, I can't take your money. When a title extractor comes in and says, can you tell me if that person's taxes are current? I can't answer them. That's pretty lame.
Well, I think it's lame to be looking for an extra hour when you're already at the desk as a town clerk and to break it out. I just don't understand that.
Stan, if you knew how many hours I worked that I don't get paid for, you'd be surprised. But if that's the way you want it, that's fine.
I I just see it as the means of, we can work it out, I think, with the treasurer's people as to how to handle it. But then in other offices around the twenty six at least, where I see that happen on a regular basis. I know it's a small town, but we don't have a lot of money to play with either. When you add that up, it's nine hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Well, hopefully, we can um take a look at a system that will make everyone's job uh clear cut and um it it it's, I think it will be difficult for our residents to get used to that um um delay and but.
Well, I'm wondering, what is it that is not getting done that would be gotten done if those kinds of questions were not answered? There's, there must be something that it's interfering with that would be causing a delay. If someone is already in a location and asked a question, I guess is the real issue, is someone refusing to answer a helpful question unless they get paid for it. And I and that that to me, I mean, that's what it boils down to. And and I I just don't quite understand that. We're all here to help the town. We are, we all work overtime. I'm not advocating that anyone's grossly overworking hours. But I I guess I I need to, I need some other justification other than, you know, I don't, I guess I don't understand the the concept that's being discussed uh if if uh if I could offer that. I just, I don't see it.
Yeah, I I understand Guy has worn many hats and he has taken many of those hats off and that there may be a a a a thought that that there should be more time now for the town clerk to do other things. But that's not necessarily always the case. Um.
Well, Stan, you know, when I'm there eight and ten and twelve hours during uh uh election time, when I'm there doing things, doing recordings and so forth, a lot of that stuff I do not get paid for. And I'm just feeling that I should be compensated for doing stuff that I do. The bottom line is that the last time we had a six point eight cost of living expense, I did not get a raise. I've had one raise in four years. And if you don't wanna pay me, then that's fine. Then I'm just not gonna do the work because I do not work for free anymore.
I'm not asking you to do anything for free. I'm not making a helpful suggestion. It simply referred to the treasurer. And as far as next year's budget, I think you should be paid for those extra hours. That to me is not a concern. I feel badly that you do it without getting it. So there's a time and a place for each of the issues.
But I, but I do think the bottom line here is that it cannot be recorded as treasurer hours because an audit will find that you are not a a technical treasurer. And that's the, that's the problem that 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 our treasurer has seen in this, looking at the pay scales, uh, looking at the salaries that uh you have removed yourself from that position, but there were some time recorded as treasurer. And that's all that we're looking at right now. And um, you know, if he needed to uh, I don't know what I'm trying to say. I uh.
Table the issue and talk about it again next.
All right. If we can table, table, I would like to add this to the discussion at the next meeting. Um, if Guy's gonna check on the phone system, that may be helpful for us um in trying to uh deliver uh questions to the more appropriate people and and make everyone more more responsible for their particular jobs, that would, that would would work. But I certainly don't want to step on anybody's toes in here. I know we all work very hard for the town of Brookline. And um, um, it's, it is appreciated. Uh, unfortunately, it's, it's just that this particular case, there was a question about the title treasury billing and it wasn't from for a treasurer and that that we.
Can I ask you who questioned that?
Sure.
Can I ask you who questioned that?
Yes, sir.
Who questioned that that uh billing for the treasurer?
Well, even looking forward through it, I noticed it the first time. And it came back again when Melissa sent a very detailed message, a very detailed payroll the second time. Stan picked it up the second time. So I noticed it the first time in May and but I thought it might have been a a carryover from before you resigned. But when it showed up the second time, it was picked up the second time, it was questioned. And so I said I would talk to you about it.
Okay. So going forward tomorrow, tell me what you want me to do. You want me to tell the residents and the people and the title searchers that they need to call the treasurer? Is that what you want me to do?
Well, Guy, title searches is the deeds and you're responsible for that, aren't you, by law?
Pardon me? I'm what? I'm not the tax collector.
No, I know that, but you're, but your title search involves the deed, so you will help them with that.
The deed, I don't mind giving the deed. But I do, but I have to also, they ask me what their tax liability is and are they paid up? I don't know what your problem, Stan, I don't really know what your problem is. But if you're gonna dick around for a an hour a week, I can't believe that. I just really can't believe that after everything that I've done for this town, I just can't get over that.
I I think the initial concern, Guy, is is that it was registered as a treasurer billing, not and and that that's an audit issue.
Yes, that's what I hear.
It's an audit issue that.
Okay, so that's.
That was my.
Add an hour onto my salary for the the town clerk?
If you're, if you're, I I can't answer that now. Let's do a little research on this and we will bring it back.
Tell me what you want me to do tomorrow.
I would say, Guy, continue adding now, add the hour.
Well, add the hour as the town clerk, not as a treasurer.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Yeah, have a good night.
Okay, uh, it's never always easy, but we will move on from this. It is something that needed to be addressed for an audit pers perspective. All right. At this time, I'd like to move on to communications. Um, we have received in the past few weeks some emails from uh Daniel Schno Schoder and of course Christine Chandler. And again, these are two of the delinquent uh contacts that I mentioned earlier in my select board report because I was not up to really following through on some things. Um, I'm not sure, Stan, when you talked to Daniel, he did put in his letter that that he sent to us that, you know, he is uh from from Germany. I guess he really couldn't be on our select board, but he certainly could uh uh contribute to a committee part of of anything that the town is doing. Um, and Christine is a a resident of the U.S. and she she, you know, she is interested. I don't know how 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 she, when you speak with Daniel tomorrow, um, yeah, do find out what what he's interested in. And then we need to follow up on Christine and and um, I don't know, should we invite her to a meeting or or how how would you think would be the best way of of this, approaching this?
Well, I'd like to meet Christine, that's for sure. We talked about this about six weeks ago, but we didn't feel at that time was a good idea because she just come in the area. She had lost her husband, if I got this right, and her mother, do I have that right? Within the last year and a half, so she's obviously responding to a grief situation. But I thought a welcoming um invitation, if she'd like to come and help us. Keep it open.
At a meeting or informal or or how do you wanna?
Right here, I mean, have a couple hours she could do too. And just get to meet her. She seems to be very interested in our town, God bless. And anytime somebody's interested in town, I'm into jumping on that.
All right. So I will uh give Chrissy a call and ask her if she would like some time on our, early on in our next Zoom meeting on June eighteenth um to uh discuss what she's, what she'd like to see, uh, how she might contribute to the town.
It's June fifteenth, June fifteenth.
Oh, June fifteenth, yes. Yes, June fifteenth.
And 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 I, if I can interject about Mr., I hope I say this right, Shoner?
Yes.
He, in his letter, as you noted, didn't, was not very specific. He said about roles. So uh, I'm looking at time efficiency and being sensitive to what we do, as Guy is. Uh, why don't we schedule a meeting, either since it doesn't involve a select board decision, either as a workbeat, sit down and talk with them, tell them what the jobs are, do it at one time so we're not fragmented. They can each ask questions, they will benefit by each other's questions. Uh, and I can delay, I'll tell them, we have decided to handle it differently, if in fact the board decides they wanna handle it differently. And uh, deal with it at one time with both of them there. Uh, answer any questions. It is no emergency to get Mr. Shoner into anything or Christine into anything, as far as I can tell.
So so you, so, okay.
I'm gonna get it, Chuck.
Just a moment. Do you want to put both of them together at the same?
Why not? They're not telling us what they.
We don't know, we don't know either one of them. I'm not so sure. I'm excited about that.
I think for personally, don't, don't have personal information. They don't, we're not, we don't have to ask them about their background. This is what the options are. Anyway, that's just my, I'm open to suggestion.
Sure, that's a, I mean, we can test and all that. Um, I just assume meet with each one of them individually and find out where they're at. Um, I don't wanna see it crossed over between the two of them. I think it's a good idea to make this one on one, meaning one, the select one, one on Christine and one on the select one on Daniel individually. So we can see their intention without interference from some uh, I don't wanna say it. So you don't have two people at once trying to do the same thing. I, you know, I don't know if I'm correct, but I just feel a lot more comfortable. Maybe maybe the following, uh, select one meeting, how the other individuals will come and see what their, what their, what their desires are, what their intentions are. I'm very interested, I don't know the standard, but I'm very interested in Christine in that letter that we got. And so since I've looked at it, but I think um at least an invitation, we have considered, you know, thinking about what you've had to say and wondering if you're interested in coming to visit with us sometime soon, I believe. Without being pushy, because she, yes, because she's a little let out with with the letter showing that she was interested in that. I think it's a great idea to say, we as a select board are very interested in that you moved into town or anywhere we can help to help you settle and what other, what ideas you have going forward in terms of what you were thinking about in terms of contributing to the town.
So Bruce, I'm not sure if I understand, are you talking about a select on Zoom or are you talking about reaching out personally to her as a, as a non quorum kind of?
No, we're not making decisions, I think, but I think we should leave it up to her and see what she wants to do. Especially in light of the uh background situation she's had with with the grief that she's dealt with. She obviously moved from Tennessee to get out of there because there's all too much. And she's settling and getting used to the area and I guess.
Could I sound a cautionary note?
What was that, Peter?
Could I sound a cautionary note here?
I had it.
I I think you're very close to a privacy infringement here. I'd say this because it's frequently discussed in board meetings and uh we need to not be specific about personal things.
Okay. So you're saying, speaking. Is that what you're saying, Peter?
Sorry?
Uh, you're saying generally speaks a, I'm just saying, have it come or have it not come, that's all I'm saying. Now, where you going with it, Peter? I'm talking about a personal, I understand.
About about where she moved from, why she moved and what she's going through.
Yeah, that's none of our business, as it were.
Well, she did send a letter to us explaining all that, but I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate it.
Well, is it, is the letter to the board and and readable in the public forum?
Was it, Doc? Was it, Doc?
I didn't, I did, I did not edit to any minutes.
No, I'm saying the letter that she sent originally. Was it to the board, to the town? That's a Peter question.
I'm talking out of turn, but it, but this is something that really raised the hackles on the back of my neck.
Yeah, all right, all right. Point taken, point taken. Go ahead, Stan.
It was, I believe, sent to the town office to be read by the people here. And I'm not sure how much it got into the personal information. There's some information that was given of a personal nature on her behalf, without being asked, about her current scenario and why she moved here. I don't believe, I'm sure I didn't solicit it. And I know Dot didn't because I don't remember her call. So the, I, I appreciate that input. I think it's a good thing. I, I guess all I want to say is, it, to me, sounds like the best approach is for me to cancel my meeting tomorrow and allow time for the board to decide when and how it wishes to meet these two people, whether it be individually or together, whether it be at a select board meeting or whether it be as a work bee, just simply gathering information like an application.
When you say a work bee, I mean, two, one or two select board members can meet with a member of the public and not be a quorum. But the three of us cannot meet with anyone outside of a public meeting. And I don't know, I just, I, I have seen that. Stan, I would like for you to continue, to talk with Daniel just tomorrow to keep that appointment and talk with him. I will call Christine up and talk with her and ask her if she would like to join us on a Zoom at the next meeting. You can ask Daniel if he would like to come also. But I would like one of us, each of us, to personally reach out to the person before the next meeting and, and listen a little, talk a little, and invite them to the, to the 15th.
Doc, you're talking about having a vote? You're talking about having a vote on this meeting?
See, if there's a need to. I mean, Stan may find that after speaking with Daniel, he can come back to the select board on the 15th and, and tell us, you know, that, you know, if, when we're ready to do some more ARPA research that Daniel would like to be involved in it. And that, and Christine may decide that she would like to start following select board meetings if she wants to actually join the, the select board or if she also just wants to do committee work. So we, we need to talk to him to find out ahead of time what they're interested in. And so I will certainly reach out to Christine. And Stan, if you're still comfortable with talking to Daniel, I would like that to continue. And then just shoot us an email with a brief summary of what you were able to learn.
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, all right, excellent. I'm going to move on in communications to regular mail. Did you check the mailbox to see if there's anything important there that we need to be aware of from the select board mailbox? All right, thanks, Bruce.
I looked yesterday morning. I didn't make a note of it because I didn't want to infringe on anyone else's doing that since we hadn't talked about it. I didn't notice anything that needed, needed an immediate response. What I did note is that Judy, the assistant treasurer, went through it, took out what things pertain to her and her role in that regard and, and put other things back. So I don't know what we'll find there, but I didn't think it was anything that needed an action tonight. But I don't, again, something might have come in since.
All right, well, I'm waiting for Bruce for a minute, see what he says. And then we'll just, then at that point, we can just finish up with accounts payable and payroll and agendas set up.
Anything we want, okay. Okay, let's see what we got here. The first thing I got is please send your special donation to the American Red Cross. Anyone want to see that? Okay, that's the first one.
Is it an appropriations request?
Please send your special donation by July 1st.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not an appropriation request. Okay, I'll try to be a little more specific. Here's a letter, contract renewal for Wyndham, from Wyndham County Humane Society that was sent to Guy.
I'll have to sign that. And I can do that tomorrow when I come in to sign my law, my signature on the top of the warrants, approved contract.
I'll put it back.
Should we instruct them to mail it to the select board?
No, come see town clerk, that, that's fine.
Okay, then we've got dog owners at Six, Six Pupus Lane from the town of Brookline. I don't know what this is all about.
Looks like a letter they sent to them, they came back because they, they aren't there anymore.
Return to sender, yep, that's what it is.
All right, so that's good. That's fine. We can circular.
Then we got Brookline County Office of Emergency Management, of course.
Okay, that's, that's something I'll need. Okay, so put that with the, the dog contract. I'll pick that up tomorrow.
It's something from Grace Cottage that says, dog bite report on 5/21. And it's all kinds of stuff in here about what happened and who was. So I'll give you that too. That's going to your auspices too. Town health officer.
All right, so put it, put it with, yeah, we'll paperclip all those together. Okay.
Last, I think this goes for Mark, possible for Mark bills. What is this?
I received some of those already. These are copies to be.
Okay, all right. So if you'll just take those few things that are, are necessary for me and, and when I come in tomorrow, I'll, I'll ask them, I'll get them from Guy. All right, that's for the regular mail. All right, we're going to move on then to pay orders as soon as Bruce comes back in. Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant S 2022-45 in the amount of $261,726.44. May I have a second?
Excuse me, you, you labeled that as 2246?
No. Mine says, let me look at my, oh, yes, I am, my mistake. This print is so small. You're right. Thank you, sir. The number is S 22, 2022 dash, it's 47, 47, my mistake, in the amount of $261,726.44. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan Noga. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2247 for $261,726.44, signify by saying aye. Aye. All were in favor, unanimously passes. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2022-46 dated May 25th, 2022 in the amount of $1,950.76. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce. Discussion. I will note that this includes those two hours that were attributed to Mr. Tanza for treasury. I'm wondering if, what, what, how we should let, let this lie? What, what we should do about the recording of that?
Well, I read the materials that we received from the treasurer. And if I'm not mistaken, the actual title for what that work was for was left blank. There was no description that was, if there was a description on the actual invoice or timesheet that Mr. Tanza submits, it was not transferred to the computer to identify. Apparently, it was only after that fact that there was a verbal acknowledgement. So we know what it's for, but it was unlabeled. And like I said, for my part, my input is continue to pay the hour. But I, I do think that maybe the 1st of July, we should buy the 1st of July and decide how we're going to handle that, one way or another.
Yeah. What's that?
I, I, your, your.
Your phone is off. You're muted.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Yeah, I, I was muted. Yeah, I, I was looking at the, the delay. It was treasurer duties at $20, this particular form. So I, I agree, July 1st, we really should look at it. And, and I think we'll have things clarified by then. Maybe the phone system would be helpful. All right, if, and no other discussion, I would like to, we have a second on that payroll. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2022-46 dated May 25th, 2022 for $1,950.76, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimously passes. Thank you. And then move on to setting the agenda for the June 15th. I have one item would be the RFP for the heat pumps discussion. Should we talk, let's see, what, oh, the windows? The window at the round schoolhouse repair? What, anything else that you wanted to think of now? Or we can wait until closer to the next meeting to add to this agenda?
I, I, at this moment, feel that I would rather offer things to you for suggestions for the next agenda between now and the next, next 10 days, in the next 10 days.
All right, very good, yeah. And I'll get this out earlier. I apologize for the long weekend and, and I was like, oh, no, I didn't do my agenda yet. So, all right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting. May I have a second?
I second what you.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, the meeting has been adjourned. The time is 8:46 PM. Thank you all very much for your time this evening. And, and as always, your time outside of the meeting.